Facebook about Halloween and what the city is doing or allowing and trying to encourage safe night, so we'll keep doing that up to Halloween night, just to let people know that we are doing Halloween, that we are encouraging that. Any questions about what I've put out?
Was that survey amount included in the contract amount with that contractor? Or is that over and above?
No, that's part of it. That's part of the contract.
Okay.
It was actually the contractor that's doing that part for their own surveying, just to see where they want that wall in relationship to what was going on. All right. Thank you. Very good. Takes us to Eric. Eric's not here. Well, you all have his report. Is there any questions for Abby? I was gonna throw him to Ryan, so. So, if not, we'll go on to Steve.
Good evening, everyone. Metro Ag removed nearly 700 dump truck loads of lime from the lime ponds since our last meeting, finished that project up. Now we can move forward in reshaping one of the ponds, making it more useful. Right now, it's real hard to get the equipment in and out. It's actually more costly to get the lime out now. If we change the shape of that, one of those ponds down there, it'll save us some money in the long run. We've got to get there first, so. First step's done. We also removed 400,000 gallons of bio salads from the wastewater treatment plant. This land applied on fields will be good on the storage area on that until spring. We'll have to do it again. Water line project, all lines are installed. CE's gotta come back, dress up a few yards where some yard work needs done. Asphalt patching crew is done with Cedar, done with Biltmore, Northforth, and they've started on La Porte. A good chance they might finish La Porte tomorrow or first part of next week. Been looking, trying to compare numbers for the overlay of Cedar. They received a two-inch overlay, two to two-and-a-half inch overlay, depending on where the area is. We'll get that road cleaned up and match the rest, so. Other than that, lots of routine stuff. Any questions?
What's the timeframe on Cedar?
We're out for prices right now, so.
Steve, when you change over from the old water lines to the new water lines, I mean, what's the process for that? I mean, is there boil orders or?
No, you try to keep all the lines charged. There may be, you know, a few minutes span or even a short time that the line may have to be shut down, depending on if you can feed it from the backside, where the nearest valve is. But normally, it's pretty limited, so. But most of the time, pressure remains there, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Thank you. Oh, you're up.
Guys, have my written report. I just want to mention a few of the upcoming events taking place and some places that have recently opened that are of interest for tourists, including the Museum Learning Center that had their soft opening this past weekend. The Hall of Giants opened with the dinosaurs and a couple other exhibits that were open to the public. The Art Guild has opened its museum and art center, which is down there in Courthouse Square. And we do have a new winery opening up in downtown this weekend with both wine and mead. This weekend also have Jerry Huggins. He'll play the saxophone at the Pergola at the corner of Main and Merchant. Looks like the weather's gonna shape up pretty well for that from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. The Pumpkin Glow Event will be 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Main Street Park. And the Deja Vu Spirit Reunion will be in Memorial Cemetery, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Next weekend, the Halloween Spooktacular, the Downtown St. Jen Organization is coordinating that event with downtown merchants and other entities to distribute candy to children who walk around from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Halloween Day. And then November 7th, there's some plans for a street festival event called Pecanapalooza that'll take place on Market Street, along Market Street, largely around the French Colonial America campus. And the Jean Baptiste Vale House will host some activities as well as the Welcome Center. And then November 14th, another Downtown St. Jen event is, usually it's the Cookie Crumb Trail. This year, they're not giving away the cookies as they usually do, but they're having some bags with coupons in them to go around to various merchants. They might be planning some other things as well in addition, in lieu of the cookies. The last thing I mentioned in the written report, the Welcome Center, again, a lot of things changing around there still. We have actually three pretty major exhibits with the diorama, vertical log exhibit, and then the one on loan from French Colonial America. And you can tell people used to browse around in there and that, you know, things were kind of hit and miss around different topic areas around the building. And this is a more coordinated educational experience with information, and people are kind of lingering longer, reading the different interpretive panels and asking questions about different things, especially, you know, where they are in the diorama and what they're looking at, that sort of thing. You have the attendance numbers for the last month or so. This past Saturday, the Night of the Werewolf event was hosted by French Colonial America, and we had some daytime activities with Dennis Stromat playing a concert at the Jean Baptiste Vale House. And so that number of 175 through the Welcome Center is our largest number coming through there on a Saturday or any day since June 1st, since we reopened. So hopefully, those trends continue through the holidays. I know I give a lot of numbers, I don't want to dive into them too deeply with some of the graphs and charts that I have here, but this kind of reflects where we're at with our Facebook campaign that we've been using as part of the grant program. And the first page there, it's kind of those little blue charts, that middle column will show the page views and post reach and post engagement. And that's when, you can see the ad campaign there, it's kind of uptick around the 1st of October. And so our reach on posts is at, you know, 267,000 in the course of three weeks. So that's the number of people who are seeing our ads. And then engagement means they're interacting, they might be commenting or sharing or those kind of things. And those obviously showing the results of our ad campaign there. The orange chart again showing kind of that same thing. So the dark orange is showing you the paid post reach, so that means those are the advertisements. The lighter orange below there is organic, means when we put a post out there, that's how many people are seeing it. So you say we're going from, you know, sometimes our posts might be reaching 300 people or, you know, we get lucky, we get to 3,000 people. Well, for these, you see, we're hitting about 30,000 a day with the ad campaign. Now, in that top chart again, in that lower right corner, there's kind of an uptick of the light orange number, and that's related to, I think largely, a post over the October 16th weekend with regard to the museum. We just did a post of, you know, some of the pictures of the dinosaurs that were in there, and that organically had a pretty good bump in terms of people sharing that and commenting and looking forward to come and visiting the museum. The next page again, just kind of showing our gradual increase in followers, and those are related to the ad campaign, which directs people to the Visit St. Jen Facebook page. We also, we have three Facebook pages that we manage, and actually, the one that has the most followers and likes to it is just basically St. Genevieve STE period, because we also have St. Genevieve with the Saint spelled out. And I did print out a chart, I wanted to show you guys on that. If you pick one of those back, it should be 30 minutes, we'll have to get all the way back. Do it tomorrow, hopefully. And this is kind of, I did a little bit of a graphic going back through. Eventually, I'll get all this, all these numbers for Facebook over the last two years, but with this one, I just went back on the likes, which on December 20th of 2018, we had 4,522 people that liked the Facebook page and so kind of following along our posts. And so in the course of a year to January 1st, 2020, we had an uptick of 478. So that was a full year, there were 478 people that kind of added on to our, as likes for Facebook. In the half year since that time, so from January 1st to the day I started, we added another 189 people that liked the page. And then you can see the numbers that were kind of since that June 24th. So what we've been doing, as I probably mentioned in the past, you know, when a business is posting something now about whether they have a product or that they even have a lunch special, if they're a restaurant, we do reposts on it across all three of our pages, so people know kind of what's going on in town, whether it's an event, whether they're looking for ideas of, you know, where they're gonna have dinner that night or whatever. So we try to repost a lot of that, and I think that's increasing our reach. And then, as you can see, the bottom number there, there's a growth of 373 likes in three days, four days, and that's, I think roughly, when you got something like the museum opening and they've got the cool dinosaur pictures and things like that, you're gonna pick up that spike where people are like really interested in something and it kind of makes its way around. And so hopefully, that helps you establish a higher base so that you can stay at that level and kind of keep that growth moving upward. So that's why I just want to let you know where we're at with those different things on Facebook. And again, we'll keep looking through the data to see how we can chart things. Any questions? Yes?
Do we have a method, or do you have a method of asking visitors like how they heard about us or how they?
We do ask, yeah. And I don't know that this campaign quite yet, especially since it's so broad-based, because we do have the radio going and we have print and we have billboards. I'm not sure that, I think it hasn't influenced because people know we're open and that we have things going on here. I don't know that they're acting to any one thing at this time, and especially probably not the social media just yet.
Yeah. But I should, I see the comments and shares and stuff on Facebook, so I would see when I, you know, tag my friends, like what's up with this, so you always do, you do work there.
Thanks.
Toby, a follow-up to that. Is there any way to dig into this and find out what the effect of geographical reach of this page is?
Yes.
Like, how many of these 5,000 people are located here versus?
Yeah, we do get the city breakdown. I can dig through that information a little further. It's heavily, you know, this region includes Farmington and Jefferson County and Perryville are the largest proponent, and obviously, St. Genevieve, a lot of people following locally too, which is a good thing, because they should know what's going on and hopefully participate in the activities downtown as well. But I can get to further breakdowns on that. It's actually funny, I think I noticed one time, we had a decent following through Weingart, through Germany.
Yeah.
So it's one of the top cities that'll look at St. Genevieve information.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Steve, do you need to address the board?
I can, yes.
Well, you can. Nobody had any questions, but he's here now, so.
I apologize, my son had his last football game in Perryville, trying to catch as much of it as I could, so I thought that, I was hoping maybe Abby would be a little longer winded than he was, but. You guys got my report. Happy to answer any questions. Well, you're in a little, I know it was kind of impromptu and last minute, but our insurance company brought by a shooting simulator for us that we only got for a week this time, but we're supposed to be able to schedule to have a couple weeks in the future. I extended the invite to you guys, and a few of you took advantage, and I think it was a neat kind of eye-opening experience. And like I said, when we get that back, I'll certainly give you guys a little bit more of it, hand some notice, so you can run through it if you want, but just kind of giving some scenario situations for the officers, and, you know, not all of them are deadly force situations, you know, some of them are other places on the force continuum, but also some that don't require any force at all. So I think it's a good exercise for them, and I know that our insurance company, like I said, they're the ones that set it up, and I know that they offer another like driving simulator training and some other things like that, so we're certainly going to try to take advantage of as much of that as we can. So I appreciate all the women, Armbruster and all the Rainey and all the woman.
Johnson.
Johnson. I don't know if it's Kinsky or Johnson, I apologize.
No, it doesn't matter, whatever. I'll answer either.
Coming through, and I think it gave a good opportunity to answer some questions and just kind of, kind of little eye-opening situations for them, so. Anybody have any questions? Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Takes us down to our COVID discussions. Mr. Jeanette's here, will give the board an update.
Again, thank you for having me, and above all, thank everybody for wearing a mask. So anything I read, the number one thing is wearing a mask, so thank you. The numbers are going up steadily and everything. Granted, we are, there's more testing being done and everything, so therefore, they're gonna find more positive and everything. If you take anything away from what I say this evening is that this is a dangerous virus, and we have to stay alert and everything. One of the things that I always like to say is, once this is over with, which it will be and everything, and we get, we gather and we sit around the table like you all are tonight and everything, let's hope no one is missing. So if somebody says something about a mask, remind them of that. As I told you, currently, we had 362 tests, 13, we have 13 new, there's 15 probable. And probable is they've not been tested, but they have symptoms. And then 67 active, that means those people actually have it. Some of them, most of them are at home. Currently, we have, according to the Missouri Hospital Association, I think somebody had asked about hospitalization, there's 10. And, you know, that's gonna fluctuate. Some will go home, some will be added and everything, but currently, it's 10. On the flu shots, currently, we've given 861. I definitely hope we hit at least 1,000. Why I say that is if you have symptoms, fever, runny nose, you know, if you didn't, if we weren't in COVID, you would think, oh, I'm getting the flu or something like that. So if you go to the doctor, urgent care, or wherever you go, one of the things, first things they'll ask you, did you get a flu shot? And if they say yes, then in all probability, they'll test you for COVID. We still have several clinics going, and then if any of you didn't get your flu shots yet, you can call the health department. They come out, you don't even have to get out of your car. And also, we're having an actual drive-through on the 29th of October at the health department itself to do flu shots. And then also, we have all the three different types of vaccines that are needed. And if you're over the age of 65, then they're giving you the high-powered ones and everything. Somebody I know, Mr. Rainey, you had asked about the COVID vaccine and everything, if people will take it if it's not been FDA-approved. You know, I read a lot, I really couldn't find anything definitive about it, other than I can tell you, I won't take it if it's not FDA-approved, and I think a lot of other people feel the same way. And then there are some people, if God approved it, they probably aren't gonna take it. So I, there was.
Understand, to clarify, my, the question, the point I tried to make that night was, functionally, we shouldn't have access to get a vaccine if it hasn't been approved by the FDA. That's my question. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I think that there might be some out there. I don't know either, to be real honest. And like I said, I read a lot, looked a lot, and I really couldn't find anything definitive.
Okay.
So. Anybody got any questions or?
Jeanette, is there anything else that you would recommend that we as a city can do?
Encourage masks. I still think that is the number one preventive measure. As I'm talking and everything, particles, you know, come out and everything, that's why you wear a mask, if you sneeze, if you cough. And it's like a fan effect, if you've seen some of the pictures and stuff, it's just like it fans out, it goes to your right, it goes to your left, it goes straight ahead. And with that, then I'll reverse the question. Do you see anything else the health department can do? Because indeed, you know, we follow up on all the positives, you know, the things that we get, we do, we call the contacts. Some people aren't honest about contacts, but that, there's not really much we can do about that.
And you, you at the health department do have signage available for businesses?
Yes.
Okay, so encouraging businesses that if they don't have signs, to come, call the health department and see what you can provide?
Yes, because I think if anybody went to some of the activities that, up at the fairgrounds and stuff, I think, what was it, the first weekend in August, then they had the tractor pull and, they had three different, and stuff like that. Bob Klender, who's the kind of the bug guy, so to speak, and everything, he went up there, he talked, put up signs, gave signs available, et cetera.
Would that sign be beneficial for the events that are happening downtown?
Yeah, and if you have, if somebody has an event, to be real honest, if it's an outside event, I, that doesn't worry me as much as if you're in confined areas and stuff, but yes, we do have signage that they can get. And he even, there's somebody asked today, they were concerned about something that was going on, and he's gonna meet with that individual tomorrow and look at some areas and give them ideas of what they can do. And along with that, post signs.
And with your, with the positive cases that the health department sees, is the health department asking those individuals if they typically wear a mask or?
Well, normally, they're quarantined, so they're, they're at home or they should be, let's put it that way.
Yeah, well, I may ask, I was asking, you know, if they're typically wearing masks when they go to the grocery store or whatever.
Probably not, because these, not only are those, those 13 new people, they, there's a whole process, there's like a five-page thing that the state requires that they fill out, which in turn is, you know, questions that you ask the individual. And then those 67 active ones, most of those are called on a daily basis to check on their, how they're doing, are they doing okay, anything, you know, we can do for them and stuff like that. And that kind of plays into the next thing, the next time, if you want me to come back, the next mantra that I want to work on is everybody get a pneumonia shot. Because what we have found out is that these, some of these 67 people there at home, they're doing fine. And about five days into their quarantine, they get sick, they start running a temp, that type of thing. So we encourage that they go see their doctor or go to the emergency room. And what they're finding out, they end up being admitted, and do you know what their number one, after COVID, what their number two diagnosis is?
Pneumonia?
Pneumonia.
Can I get a pneumonia shot from the health department, which you have, right?
Yes.
You'd have to have a doctor's record.
Yes, you do. And if any of you looked at the shopper's bag, you know, that piece of brown paper that in the past?
Yeah.
Went from my mailbox to my hand to file 13. But it reaches about 7,000 post mailboxes and everything, and we're gonna put something about pneumonia in that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The committee reports. Toby, have anything for planning and zoning? We have, somebody's talking. Yeah. Ashley, anything to share about the park?
Not really, our monthly meeting will be next Tuesday. Until we cover it, we got the pumpkin glow on Saturday, so that's about it right now.
Very good. Are there any public comments?
I'm gonna chime in here.
You wanna chime in?
I did have a resident on my ward just ask me this evening about the concrete on Valley Springs Trail, but Gary's here, so we can come talk with Gary and get his answer about fixing some pavement there.
It's asphalt on there?
Yeah.
And I was gonna bring that up, I was out there last week. That asphalt is, if we need to make a decision, the board does, that needs some work. It needs to be sealed, there's a lot of cracks, and it's gonna get away from us, and it's gonna be expensive to fix. And there's a lot of people, so that, that's something that needs to be on our radar, especially this spring. I know it might be a little bit late, but I don't think our street department's gonna be able to handle it. I think we're gonna have to hire somebody to seal and fix tracks and save that trail, because it'd be a shame to lose that.
I was talking about the actual road, Valley Springs.
Oh, the road. I'm talking about the trail. The trail is in terrible shape.
Yeah.
It's gonna be in terrible shape.
The roadway, the, the concrete is cracked and buckled in some spots, so it's been marked, Gary had mentioned that. They're planning on fixing it here in the near future, so just for the record.
Very good. So you took care of that. And I had somebody talk to me about putting stripes on that road too, Gary.
Yeah, that's in this year's budget.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah.
Because it's hard to see at night.
There's some progress parkways where it's drugged.
Right, progress parkway.
Yeah.
There's progress parkways, I was talking about the stripes, so you're talking about the springs. Okay. Anybody else? So at 6:32, we're gonna have a public hearing. Purpose of this hearing is to consider requests from Lehman and Candy Maherin for a special use permit that will allow guest lodging at 311 St. Mary's Road, St. Genevieve, Missouri, 63670. Property is currently located in R2 General Residential District. David?
Yes, you have a packet before you, so Mr. and Mrs. Maherin has the cabin, if you've been down on St. Mary's Road, taken apart and rebuilt, down on St. Mary next to their shop, Sassfast Creek. They applied for a special use permit on September 24th. Notice was mailed to the applicants and adjoining property owners on the 25th. I didn't receive any calls from neighbors. Police and fire department were notified and don't have any issue. Meeting notice was sent to the media on the 6th, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission met on October 7th and voted to approve the application 503, and it comes before you tonight. Yes, sir?
Where was the, I haven't been down by there lately and stuff, but where would they be parking?
There's parking for five vehicles, and on the special use permit for Sassfast Creek, they had provided two, so there's three additional spots.
Those are new spots?
No, they're existing spots. It's about 100 foot long there. Any other questions?
Very good. You wanna add?
You don't have to.
So we'll close the public, we'll close the public hearing at 6:34. That takes us to the consent agenda.
Second?
All the favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we need to look at the close stuff, don't we? Were we proven? I don't want to leave what we're proving.
That's a good idea. I get two of them. All right. Good.
Can we do that over again?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us to old business, Bill Number 43. This is second reading of Bill Number 4388, an ordinance approving memorandum of agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated, Missouri Corporation to modify the initial professional service agreement dated August 12, 2010.
We approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Eyman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ambrooster?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes, zero no, and one absent. Bill Number 4388 now becomes ordinance number 4312.
Thank you. Takes us to the second reading of Bill Number 4390, an ordinance approving a change order number one to the contract with CE Contracting Incorporated, St. Genevieve, Missouri, on the water main improvement project 20-8999 in the amount of $17,263.
We approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Ambrooster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Eyman?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, zero no, and one absent. Bill Number 4390 now becomes ordinance number 4312.
Thank you very much. Under new business, it's my job to appoint three board members to the, to the housing committee, who will attend meetings with other groups to figure out ways to stimulate new home construction in St. Genevieve. Do I have any volunteers?
Bob?
Bob?
I suppose.
That was good.
Mr. Mayor, I would volunteer.
Thanks, very good.
I don't mind.
Ashley? Thank you.
There you go.
Give you the youthful voice here.
Very good.
Thank you.
Am I not youthful?
You know what I mean.
I'm offended.
Close names.
You.
I was taking the heat off your back.
More obvious, though.
All right, I have a motion to approve these three new members.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. All right, takes us to Bill Number 43. No, no, that would.
Back up just a second.
Got to back up.
November, December meetings.
Oh, okay.
What do you want to do for that? Just so we can plan out what we're going to do, what we need to bring things to you, if we need to hold things off. So unless you want to meet on Thanksgiving, that would be the second meeting in the month. And then unless you want to meet on Christmas Eve, that would be the second meeting in December.
You got opening day of your camp.
The mayor brings up a good point.
So, but if you do the first meeting, it's November 12th, and then you're done for the rest of the month, that should, you know, I think, well, gun season opens at week, so that should make it safe.
Typically, we've always done the first meeting and then the understanding that if a special meeting, meeting should be called at a different time, that we would be available.
Right.
So what, what I've done in the past is we've made Monday before Thanksgiving the next meeting, potential meeting if necessary. And then in December, you know, it usually doesn't, nothing ever comes up after the first meeting.
Yeah, it's usually we just.
We can do the same thing. We'll do the Monday before.
Yeah.
Or, you know, people go out of town, they take a whole week. This is a different year than normal, so I don't know how that works. But if you want to approve the, that we, that we, what we're doing is, you know, we're supposed to meet the second, that second Thursday, so we need to have a motion and a second, and a motion and a second to approve, because we are changing what our normal schedule is.
We approve.
Second.
Come on, you do it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Very good. Are we done?
Great.
Okay. Takes us to Bill Number 4391, an ordinance calling for the general election of officers of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri to be held April 6, 2021, by providing notice to the general public.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4392, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Candy and Lehman Maheran that will allow guest lodging at 311 St. Mary's Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to second reading.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Second reading of Bill Number 4392, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Candy and Lehman Maheran that will allow guest lodging at 311 St. Mary's Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Eyman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ambrooster?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4392 now becomes ordinance number 4313.
Thank you. Takes us to the first reading of Bill Number 4393, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an extended agreement with baking commercial design in the amount not to exceed $8,900 for the architectural and engineering services for phase one of the City Hall Police Department remodeling project. And I think there'll be some discussion on this, right, Bob?
Yes. Are we going to try to tie the architectural contract to our budget number?
Yes. That's, that would be the fund that it's coming out of in this case.
So what are the ties?
When you say ties.
In other words, I don't want to do like we did the first time we approved an architectural dollar amount, and then it well exceeded our budget by a large amount of money. So I want, you know, I'd like to look at being able to tie his contract to our budget amount so that we don't get another project that's way over budget.
So I'm not sure how much of that he can control, because we know that, and this project probably want to involve a lot of wood, but that is one of the concerns that people have asked about. More than likely, it'll be steel studs, but there are construction costs that go up that I don't know if we can control that. It may depend on when we put it out for bid as well.
So for clarification, this is, in essence, a change order, or this is a drawing update? The $8,900 is a cost of what?
Because we moved, redid the bathrooms, added a hallway, redid the staff room or squad room, and kind of moved around what was in the break room. That's where our costs are. But Donovan also asked, you know, wanted to make sure that the electric was being looked at closely. So that's going to be looked at by the engineer again and make sure that it meets our, meets the code specifications, as well as redoing all the plumbing, because we're adding a bathroom. And so there's enough changes that this is where it's costing us.
So do we have a preliminary drawing, or are we just going off of?
You all saw the preliminary?
Is it an A? No.
Yeah. I think, I believe we brought that back to the board after we had committee, the committee reviewed it.
So embedded within that cost, $8,900, any structural consideration, drawing updates?
It's not significant to what it was, but it is a change. I'm not pleased with the amount, but I'm not the architect. And we've discussed it, and I understand where he's coming from on the, on the amount he's proposed.
Well, they have cost in, they've incurred cost already. So let's say this gets a no vote, how do they get, there'll have to be some avenue to reimburse them for costs that they have in it now?
No, they haven't, they have not performed any of the duties yet to redraft. Steve did all of the new drawings that we came up with. We have not done any of the mechanical, electrical, or plumbing. And except for what he's redrawn on the sketch plan, so to speak, that was in the, that last amount that we approved.
Do you get to see line item detail of what, how this $8,900 breaks down then?
I don't have.
Is it a proposal to you to consider?
No, that was what, that amount was given to me as a total. It wasn't broken down as to each, each group or what, what it was costing for each discipline.
Do we think it's unreasonable to ask for that?
We can.
Do we think that's a reasonable request?
Yeah, I agree with you 100%.
So you want more detail than at the bottom of, what is my page 19, of the Exhibit B, architects' plans including and all of that?
I, yeah, I mean, I would think, it's information they have, because they've come up with the numbers. So it's just a matter of their willingness to share that. I don't think that's a bad request on behalf of taxpayer to have that information.
So, yeah, the, we did have in an email a breakdown of what that amount was. Most of it was going to be MEP, but I don't remember what, exactly what the architect breakdown on that was compared to the engineering part of it. I'm sorry I didn't include that email. I just wanted to include the contract. But I can, I can get that number. I'll look back at the email and maybe get something a little more detailed. Because he'll be working with another group that's probably giving him these numbers.
Sure, absolutely.
Do you want that information before we do this first reading, or do you want to do a first reading and then in two weeks, bring that information to the table? Let's go ahead and go with the first reading?
And that doesn't slow anything down?
Yeah, it doesn't slow anything down.
I thought that's reasonable.
More information. It okay with everybody?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Is there any other business? Well, if there's no other business, we'll call this meeting adjourned, and we'll transition into our work session. Need a few minutes, or would you like to?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. Want to call this work session to order? Okay, move for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Happy, it's all yours.
All right, so first up is water sewer rates. Last year, the board did not want to go into a long-term type of ordinance to allow an increase every year for five years. So we're back. We're back to talk about an increase. So we've given you the number of, I think in the past, it's been 2%. That's been pretty consistent. So we broke it out anyway over five years. I also broke, you know, gave you some numbers in the staff report of what consumer price index has gone up, what the producer price index has gone up. There's nothing in, from the Bureau of Labor Standards, Bureau of Labor Standards that talks about what the, what water rates are. You've got electric, you have those utilities, but when they talk utilities, they're talking electric. So I had no reference point, except what consumer price and what producers are. So what we're looking at is just deciding, or having the board decide what increase you want us to do for this next year. If you want us to do an increase, I would, I would caution you not to, to do no increase, because I think that's, that's problematic in the future. We do small amounts every year. We don't have a large increase, which you see some of these cities that do that, and then people really get upset. If you do small increases, it stays within control, and we can afford to replace things, fix things, and get things done. We don't have those major increases.
You know, happy with, you know, we've never had a year like this year and stuff with the COVID, you know, and the strain that it's put on a lot of people's finances. Personally, I wouldn't have a problem with no increase for this year. Not saying I want to continue that every year, but, you know, due to the fact of the situation that we ended up with this year, I think this is very different. You know, like I said, I don't want to start a precedent, but I'd have no problem with no increase because of, you know, the economic strain that's been put on the taxpayers already.
But these aren't taxpayers, these are utility users. So they are.
Right, it's.
Yeah, and I just want that clarified, because.
One in the same.
Yes, they are.
Residents of the city.
Right, residents of the city.
Yes, yeah, 100%. So, I mean, and that's, that's, again, up to this board to decide that. Our costs will probably increase, you know, our costs do increase, because we passed that tonight with Alliance, so that number's gone up. So that's also something to keep in mind.
Well, in the spirit of Bob's comment, though, I would, I would like to know that we maximize the effort to publicize and get as much participation in public hearings as we can. So I'm just putting it out there. I don't, I think in years past, that hasn't happened. So that's my only comment to add to that.
So we just voted on it, it was a done deal?
Well, there, there's, there has to be a public hearing.
Public hearing, you have to.
It's just a matter, what you're saying is it's a matter of how highly that's publicized and how much people know about it.
Right. How much attention do we put on it here in the city to make sure that we get the maximum participation from the public? Because I would like to feel good about that.
Right. And give them, you know, hard numbers. This is what it's going to cost you in $1,000 in terms.
And, and if we aren't going to pass this increase, this is where, this is where you're going to be affected.
Right.
If that's possible.
I thought we had to increase it every year because of the improvements we're making in the water system, water and sources. That was my understanding.
Everything goes up every year, so. So you're going to pay for it, pay me now or maybe later, and later you're going to pay more. It's like what happened.
If we don't do 2% this year, are we going to do 4% next year?
Yeah, I.
Who's to say it's going to be any different?
The project on the books justifies an increase.
You know, I mean.
Yeah.
Or are we just not going to do any improvements next year? There ain't no money. Well, I thought we had a five-year plan.
Yeah, yep. So you've got the five-year plan, you're with your group.
Yeah.
And you're looking at improvements every year around $350,000.
Right.
So again, your daily costs are going to go up, so you ought, you have the major improvements that you want to do, and I don't.
Yeah, but this increase doesn't fund those $350,000 in improvements totally.
No, no.
This increase is just a small portion of that $350,000.
It's, it's the whole budget, but you don't want to fall behind on the budget.
Yeah, right.
I'd say you go up some. I don't say.
No.
You got to go up some now.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you have to go up 2%, but.
There'll be a shortfall somewhere. There'll be a shortfall somewhere if you don't.
Yep. So just let me know what percentage increase you want me to bring. If you have the public hearing, we'll have to advertise. It has to be over 30 days, so this won't come back to you until December.
So you're. Is it 1%?
Based on what we have on the books, I don't know that 2% is out of line.
No. No, I don't think it is.
I just, I think the optimal situation is where the average person who will bear the cost of that understands why, and has opportunity to voice opinion in a public forum, which they did last year. I'm not saying they didn't, but I think we could give more lead time. We could, we could do more to put that out there.
I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah.
Steve?
The 2% increase was based on projection that we went on with the five-year plan. It also included enough money for the cost of living increases and material prices. Everything goes up every year. It also gives us enough money at the end of the year to build the reserves or maintain the reserves in the manner the city has already pledged to that. It's all part of the big plan, so, I mean, you can cut it if you like, but it's going to sort everything out of the way.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I would be satisfied. I'll recommend a 2% increase from this chair.
Pete?
Yeah, I'm fine with 2%.
Okay, all right. Well, again, we'll advertise and bring it back in December. Okay, all right. Well, again, we'll advertise and bring it back in December. Thank you. I have a number two. So this is on Glenda Street. We talked about this last time. You wanted us to do a survey of the property owners in that neighborhood. We had four yes and four no. So you had an even split of what the residents felt, those that were willing to participate. We had fifteen residents minus the property owner that we're talking to. You had fourteen and so you had six people that or six property owners that didn't respond. You do have a couple of people here that have a vested interest in it. Those are resident over there. Yeah. So you've got some folks that can give you some feedback from their point of view. We don't, apparently, there's a, talking to Jeff, there's history with this piece of property. And I don't, I know a little bit of the history, but not a lot of it, so. Been here long enough to know what to do. So what we're looking for is just, you know, if you don't want to move this forward, we don't move it forward. If you do, that's what we're trying to do tonight. But, you know, give your guests a chance to talk. Yeah.
I'm Teddy Ross. I live at eleven forty five Allen Spring Trail. I thank you for this opportunity to talk with you about this piece of property. I was on the board when this property came up. It was a different owner at the time. And from my understanding, that that property has changed ownership over the years. We looked at it then, and there was a four to four and a tie in the mayor's vote, a tie. But the the big question was, why do we want to get rid of the property? And that was where the four of us were tied up was, why do we want to get rid of property? Once you get rid of it, you don't have it. So we could see the benefits of allowing this property to go to this individual. One reason is that is an easement through there. And when I was on the board, they talked about maybe having trails throughout the city. You know, walking, biking trails. And that never happened. We don't have anything in this town to help people get around within this city. If you walk the sidewalks, they're about two foot wide coming down Fourth Street. How does a person in a wheelchair or or something like that try to maneuver around all these telephone poles and get down the sidewalk? We don't have any place. So that corridor through there, that easement through there is very important. If you look at it, you want to build a trail system, a hiking and biking trail system in this town. I'm not sure where there one is besides out on the levee that one they put out there.
Yeah, we got that trail in the park up there and then along the main drive, Main Street.
Oh, right. So who is that for?
Well, it's for people, for any.
For tourists or?
No, no, it's for city residents. John Stute walks all over. You guys understand. He's been off.
We got we got people that walk along Fourth Street that have to dodge cars and and things trying to get to a grocery store.
No, I agree with you. I I totally agree with you on that.
Right, there's no there's no way to get over to where the shopping is. So I think that's something that the city needs to look at is say, are we willing to give this easement up that we can use in the future? Because I know we've given up easements before in this town. And I think Alderman Buck here, he even mentioned like, why did we give that up? We could use that now. So it's up to the board of what they want to do, but I'd be, I'm totally against it. Thank you.
Next, Eddie.
Thanks, Eddie.
Joe, you want to speak about it?
I if there's movement to to go forward, yes, I'd like to speak against it.
Okay, well, I would, that'd be a good time to speak because the board's going to make a decision here to go forward or against.
Joe Steiger, five forty nine Glenda Street, just a few houses away from the mentioned property. I heard tonight that there was a couple of aldermen that volunteered to to be a part of a new homeowner homeowner building group. That would be a good segue into talking about why there's importance to this. You're volunteering your time to go out and talk about building new homes. This is an amenity that could be for the city. If you start looking at Alderman Armbruster's work on the park board and what she's done to try to build the city park, roadways, parkways, trails, sidewalks. I I just think we voted on this a few years ago, and we just didn't know what the future intentions of the city was. We don't know what's going to happen in twenty years, fifty years, a hundred years from now. It's a key piece of ground that connects two main sections of the city. Just a few hours ago, I talked to a coach right outside City Hall as she's clocking her kids doing cross country. And she expressed to me, she's like, I hate having my kids have to use Fourth Street going up and down. She's like, my high school kids, I think they have some vehicle awareness. I'm not sure, but my middle school kids, she's like, it scares me to death that my middle school kids are running up and down Fourth Street. So I think that alone, if you look at the strategic nature, that I know nobody wants people in front of their houses, but I think that's pretty nearsighted for a resident to say that they don't want more people in front of their house. It's like saying you don't want a sidewalk in front of your house. I think that's not what the best interest of the city is. I know that person probably thinks that too. You know, my house is going to get a street right through there. I'm fortunate now. We're kind of on a dead end street. But my house in this, so am I going to come here and try to stop development? No, I sat in your seats because I wanted development. I wanted homes to be built. And I think what you're doing is limiting the city's options in the future. And there are ways to appease if you give a lease similar to what we do with the flood buyouts. If you want to lease the ground to her so the city doesn't have to maintain it, we haven't been maintaining it right now. So I don't know why much has got to change. So if you sign a lease or figure out a way to do it, but as soon as you give it up, you're telling all future residents that that ground is no good for their use, and you're saying that you know what's best for the city for here to eternity. So I just don't think that it's in the best interest of the city and the city residents to give it away.
Thank you, Joe.
I have a question for Mr. Ross and stuff. You mentioned an easement. Are you sure there's a recorded easement there?
I'm not sure. I mean, I just heard that there was. I'm not sure.
Because if there's a legal recorded easement there, then there is no issue here.
I I had no idea. I would think that's what his board would do is looking it up.
Yeah, I'd ask that in the last meeting.
Is that on your favors? Is that is that considered an easement?
It's a right of way. It's a right of way. It's like a street.
It's a right of way. It's a street.
It's different from an easement. An easement, we would request if we abandon or vacate it so that we can keep utilities in there and and do whatever improvements to those utilities we would need to do in the future. But as a right of way, then it can it can still be accessed by the public.
Right, but is there utilities on that property also?
Yeah.
Gas lines, water lines, at least two utilities for sure.
Right, and would those utilities require easements?
Yeah, I think I think the city already owns those easements currently. I think it's the I think it's the right of way that is in discussion. I think it's more so, I think the city would retain the rights to access to those if they would give away the property. But I think the bigger question is, do they want to give away the property, not just easements?
You know, I've been down there a couple of times, and I mean, I, you know, you've talked about uses for it. I don't think there's been any uses.
It's been blocked off with a with a levee on the other side. They've filled up a berm, and so you can't use the rest of that ground. You could use it right now if you took a backhoe down there and opened it up.
Where's the berm at on the railroad?
You can't get through, you know, getting through the other side of the trestle is the next problem.
Well, pedestrian or hiking and biking, I mean, you can't, of course, you can get a car through there, but.
You were talking, you were talking about one of the the coaches or something. So basically, you'd be coming out of public school, down Ninth Street, across Market Street, and then out.
Yeah, you come out through Roser addition.
Right.
And you choose, you know, choose wherever you want to go. You come out of CBS and cross there or cross, you know, however you want to do it.
What are our options? You know, you brought up a point, and I never thought about a lease to this homeowner. You know, like we do with the buyout properties, we have a an agreement.
That's a different beast in itself because it's per property that we purchased for residential use. It's not a right of way like this is. Either you leave it as is and she can keep maintaining it and use it for whatever, or just looking to vacate it, then she's responsible for what's on top, all the grass and take care of that, and we just retain easements for the utilities.
I couldn't see somebody wanting to lease it anyway. She's already maintaining it. She, I think she wants to own it for her. I can't speak for her. She's not here. But it sounds like she wants to join her properties together without this, so I don't think she is interested. Again, I can't speak for her, but I don't see how it favors her.
Right, you know, one thing I'm not in agreement with, once no, always a no, you know, because things change. Yeah, it just seems like there's a lot of questions about this property and what's there and, you know, with my recent exposure to the railroad and stuff, I really like to know what we maintain or what we physically own through there because I'm telling you, the railroad is a different deal to deal with, and it's their way or the highway.
But that road goes all the way through to the border, doesn't it?
Yeah.
It goes, it goes all the way through. It goes under that trestle. So as far as I consider, I consider that that's a Saint Genevieve street. The railroad can't, it goes underneath the trestle. So a little different than in your situation where we're not going across the tracks. We're going underneath them. And I think you get up in there, you have, you have grass to maintain. Isn't there some flood buyout property up in there?
Yeah.
So you go up in there and and cut grass and everything. So we do already go up in there, so we do use it, you know, the city uses it, so. Realistically, you could, you could. You have to go down there. If you go down that road, apparently, there was at one time a low water bridge. It's a concrete basin there, but it's into a bluff, right? Not a big bluff, but a berm, you know, that's that's built up on the creek, so.
I remember driving through there years ago.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I remember going through there when I was little.
Cement trucks used to go through there. That was where the cement plant was. The cement trucks used to go through there.
Yes.
You know, I don't like to be here to piss off my neighbors. I really don't. But, I mean, the other side, the creek side on the one acre that we have, I mean, would make a great park. You know, a couple benches and the shade trees along the creek. We don't have any parks on that end of town until you get out the valley springs. So we're already mowing it, so it would it would just make a great additional asset to the city.
And with a couple of you, I kind of brought it up earlier, just, oh, you know, what's the potential of opening up the exit, putting a trail there to go to the creek? I grew up in that neighborhood, so I could totally see the benefit of adding some level of recreation for the families there. When I was a kid, we would have to bike all the way across town to go do things like that. And it's like everybody has mentioned so far, once we get rid of it, it's gone. And I can see so much potential if we can just get across a couple of the hurdles. They're they're big hurdles, you know, with potential questions and stuff, but we don't know what the future holds. I think everything's changing so fast between transportation and industries and what their needs are. So we don't know. The railroad's been here for a long time. It's probably going to be there for an even longer time. But we don't know that, and once we get rid of it, it's gone, and we've taken that opportunity for recreation for those families away. Because there's nowhere else in that neighborhood area to to do that.
And I think if it was a little better maintained now, a little more attractive, it would be a lot better. It's kind of abandoned there now. There's an old gate there. It used to be locked. Now it's not locked.
And maybe that's something that we address.
Right.
How do we make this, how do we justify keeping this by improving it?
It's a clear shot going down either from the other side, from that little subdivision there. It's, you go right, you walk right down and get in the creek.
And there's there's young families on South Gabberie there too that if we can find some way in the future to eventually connect these two neighborhoods through a walking path, there's so much opportunity to to interlink the community that way and get kids out playing with with the other neighbor kids and.
And whatnot, so.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm hoping someday that the city will resurrect this trail program. They talked about it when we were alderman. And maybe take a look at this and and see. I mean, look at a national park. There isn't a lot of people coming in, and I I think that would be a benefit to the city to have a a trail system that people can walk down. Or the kids can ride their bikes, you know, and not be on a busy street like Fourth Street or, like I said, you cross through there, you're in Roser, then you're out by CBS, and then you, you got sidewalks that you can use. I just think it's it's a main part of the whole system.
I'm a little cautious about voting, you know, for things like this out of my ward. It doesn't really affect my ward. And I kind of refer back to the guys that have to face it, you know, firsthand, and plus I'm reading it wrong. I think they're both in the favor of keeping it. And like I said earlier, I I'm not much of a believer in once no, always no, but I have to refer back to these two guys and what they feel is best for their ward and.
I don't affect your ward.
Yeah, I don't. I don't do as more specific in in my mind.
It's for the whole city.
Right, no, it is.
It does. It's more to your board. And you're right there.
It's South Gabberie.
South Gabberie. I don't know what that, where the line is, if it's just.
Yeah, I don't think it goes up to this parcel.
I mean, it it's a tactical issue of representing the people well in that area and making sure that we do what, carry forth what their will is. But it's a strategic issue in that this sets precedent, you know, we we, you know, if we have, I'm I'm with you, Bob. Once no, not always no, but we've crossed this bridge before, and for some reason, people people made that decision. I I kind of respect that, what conclusion they came up to.
I don't know what those issues were back then and stuff, but I. Yeah, but it is not that piece of property. Stops right there at South Gabberie.
Yeah. Well, we want to.
Do we need a motion or anything on this?
No, we just need to decide that the lady, I I talked to the lady, you know, the whole idea is if we were going to do this, we had to spend some money on surveying and everything else, and if the board's not interested in giving it up, we don't need to waste her time or money, so.
Was she disinterested in in hearing tonight and giving some compelling argument to as to why we should do this?
I'm not going to speak for her, but, you know.
As a, as.
She was invited, though.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
That is a little disappointing.
It's a, it it doesn't, it doesn't flesh out the whole issue.
Right.
When I've I've heard one side of an argument, there's a whole nother side of it that I haven't heard, and it makes it hard to to side with her on this.
There you go. No acting, right?
Yeah.
I'd say we keep it.
Keep it.
We're keeping it. Good. All right, let's talk trash.
Yeah, talk the trash.
The city looked at this.
I don't even know what she said.
The city looked at this before. We have to franchise for a trash hauling service in the city. When they looked at this before, previous city administrator Martin Tolman told me that it was about election time. Two new aldermen came on. They were really not interested in pursuing it. And at the same time, one of the companies that was hauling went out of business. So we had two haulers, so it wasn't a big of a deal, so thirty three percent less. So currently, we have three separate haulers with the large trucks, one group with a small truck or pickup truck. So I've included all the information on the survey, so you have a chance to see what the what the numbers broke down. I can go through those individually if you want. Also, I'm. Also, I've, I've put the comments in there because I always find those interesting. I always wanted to give people a chance at the end if they want to say something in particular or something that didn't feel like was covered in the questions. So like the first question is, should we contract for, for trash service? Like for the city of, of St. Genevieve to do that. So it was 56% to 43%. Then you look at question two, and should we restrict your choice of trash service company? So what you have is people saying, please, if you can give me a better rate, I'll take it. But don't tell me what company to choose.
Right.
So I, they don't really want us to franchise it. But they love for us to say, we'll contract to somebody and get a better deal and include all the amenities that you can get with a franchise of agreements.
So it's not just me who finds that this, these two questions don't line up. It's the same 51 respondents, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I don't know how this result came out this way.
Well, if you look at question three, question three also asks, do we make it mandatory? And again, you have more negative than, than positive, so 54 to 45. Now, question four, if you give me all these extra services, I am on board. I am ready. So that's, you know, when you throw out all the bad, okay, well then that makes a difference. And then should we look into it? We're doing what the, what the majority of that audience wants us to do. We are looking at it. But it comes down to, do you feel that question two, when somebody's saying, no, I don't want you telling me who I can contract with? Because if we want to make this work, you have to do that. And it's going to be a two-year process to get to that finish line to actually get a company started. And in three months of craziness, because that's usually the way it works out when you start with a company. It's just, there's so many things, so many quirks and, and issues that you have to work through. But it can be done. Cities have done it.
I wasn't able to get past question two. And I, 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 my analysis stopped at question two. And my further question would be, would, would this be, would, would we offer the option of the city handling that service and then leave it to the consumer where they could go with the city's service or they could go with a contracted private service, or would it be one of the others?
To have that service. You have to, to make this competitive, you will have to settle in on, the way I understand, settle in on one service.
Get the best deal.
And that's who's ever going to get.
So the survey helps me in no way then. No disrespect to 51 respondents, but this is all over the map and I can't use this as any kind of basis to figure out.
And, and I would say that this survey doesn't address my main concern with this. And it's not for lack of not having a better survey. It's because I don't believe the demographic that I'm concerned about would be taking the survey since it was online. A lot of the single homeowners or, you know, individuals that live by themselves, especially amongst the elderly, don't produce a lot of trash. I know a couple of them that their trash in two weeks only amounts to maybe a grocery store bag because they compost and all this stuff. And they're on, some of them are on fixed incomes. And, you know, they would be essentially forced to, to take on this service.
Some of them are single people.
Great for seniors.
Happy, didn't you say that in one of the previous experiences for you, you had done this before?
Three different cities I've been in, we did it.
So was there an actual savings for the homeowners, for substantial savings?
So compared to what we pay here, and, and it's broken down into three different price groups. So in, in Harrisville, where I just came from, we paid $16 and got recycling and bulk pickup and yard waste pickup. So, you know, I, I would have saved $7 over what I'm paying now, and I don't get all the other amenities. Joe, you got a question?
Just if I, Joe Steiger, 549 Glenda, again. I was on the board when we did that. We advertised that. We, we put it out for two years. Right before, as I was leaving the board, the new board decided to not do it after we had it advertised for two years. It had a one single carrier. We were going to not make it mandatory for issues like that because we have lots of residents that don't generate a lot of trash. It was an optional thing. But when you look at all the additional services and the lowering of costs, it made it pretty affordable for some of those people that they decided they would have picked it up. Because as the rates were now, they didn't want to pay for one bag every week because they just generated it. So the reduction in traffic on your streets, the wear and tear on your streets, the lower of cost, the, the, the increase of services, including recycling, when we didn't have that. Because we advertised them, Republic brought in recycling to this town because they felt like they were going to probably win that bid. And they invested in that recycling route now because we tried to go down to one single source. So when the board voted for, to, to put that out for the two-year notice, we felt like it was a, a win-win for, for everybody. And we weren't going to make it mandatory if you still take your trash out to the country and burn it or take it to your store. My dad doesn't pay for trash service. He has a jewelry store. He has a dumpster. So every day when he goes to town or into the store, they take their trash and put it in their dumpster instead of paying for, you know, a trash service at their house. But there's ways around that, you know, if you didn't make it mandatory. So as a, as a citizen, I would be all for this, to get the big trash days, to get the recycling, to have lower rates, to have less vehicles on the road, making less noise in the morning and afternoons. And I, I, I know, you can even, you can even require these carriers to have scales on their trucks so that you know they're not overloaded on your streets. That can be part of your requirement, so that you know they're not running over their gross vehicle weight when they're rip roaring through town. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of benefits that I've seen. I didn't see many besides lack of choice, of course. That would be one, one thing. If, if you're going to contract it and go for a two-year, three-year contract, you're, you're stuck with that carrier for two or three years. There's always separability clauses, but they're screwed up really bad. But we saw a lot more positives than we saw negatives with, with the option of doing that. Thank you.
And, and I'll just clarify real quick. I wasn't like a hard no on it. I just wanted to say that I don't feel good about moving forward until we figure out how it's going to affect those residents that I mentioned and if we have ways to address it, so.
So, no, go ahead.
Has anybody really surveyed the people and what they pay for trash? I know there's groups of people that talk, and I'm just amazed that some people pay 45, some people pay 65, some people pay 85, and it's the same trash people, the same company. Why aren't they charging the same price for everybody? I mean, it gets ridiculous. Thank you.
Joe?
When I was in real estate in St. Louis doing property management, several of my homeowners associations tried to go this route. And a comment was made about offering recycling services, big bulk pickup and stuff like that. You're not cutting down on the number of trucks on your streets. You still will have a truck coming through to get your normal trash and a truck coming through to get your recycling trash. So you're not really solving your purpose there. And we had one company that came in on a two-year period. We had one resident that was against it. He kept track of every time a truck, trash truck come down his road, it didn't cut down anything. It was just the same company instead of two companies. And up at where they were at, there was only two available as well. City of Clayton did this to some of our properties. It actually raised the rates that one of the condominium complexes was paying. So all these promises of lower rates, less track, our trucks, less damage in the streets, hasn't really materialized in a lot of the places that I've had experience with doing this. It actually decreases the level of service because they have no competition out there. You know, if they know that, if ABC company is not doing a good job and you can go to 123 company, you know, then they're going to still do a good job because they know you have an option. If you don't have an option because you're going to be stuck with them for two years, three years, five years, whatever we decide the time, uh, time period is, your service is going to go down. We've seen that at everything that I've, I've been involved with and has done this. And trying to get ABC company to answer your calls and all that when they know they're locked in, it changes everything. And I am totally against doing this. I've been through it too many times with failed results to promise us to our citizens and sell something that is not going to materialize. It's not going to cut down on truck traffic when they're offering more services and bringing more trucks in to cover those services.
Kind of two points that Joe hit on. I don't necessarily know that it's, it wouldn't cut down on truck services because one of the trash companies currently offers a recycling service and is pretty well throughout the community. So their trucks are already on the road twice a week. Or, well, they recycle it every other week. But the other note was the, the customer service aspect will be a big issue. I know we only had 51 results on the survey, but this is not the first time that trash has been discussed on the likes of Facebook. And a lot of times those comments lead to discussing the, the range in the wages for the same service from the same company. But they try to call the company, one of the companies and can't get hold of anybody, get the runaround. So ensuring that if we do go for it with this, making sure that they have a customer service plan that we can hold them accountable for. Because apparently they're getting the runaround to a lot of their customers and some excess fees and whatnot, so.
What is on the table for our consideration tonight?
Question is, do you want to continue to pursue this or do you feel it's, it's been discussed before? We looked at it at the end. There's no benefit to move forward.
Any of my peers want to move forward with looking into this?
Well, how far can we go as far as looking into it? Can we actually ask for bids, you know, if we decide to do this?
We have to contact the companies. It's the same procedure as what they did last time. We have to send it to certified mail to the companies that currently serve the city and say, we are looking at franchising the, franchising our trash service for the city. This is your two-year notice, et cetera, et cetera. Then we need to redraft our solid waste ordinance to allow the city to, to franchise for the trash pickup. And then after you're, you know, they've had a chance to work through their process of a couple of years, then we, then we do our bid process. So if you want a home in St. Genevieve, you're, you're going to pay for trash service.
Right.
You're, there's, even if you use it or not, you're going to pay for trash service.
That's, that's what has been required.
That's current, that's current ordinance.
Well, you have to, you have to pick up trash, but the requirement is that you have to pay for that trash service for the city.
Like I don't, I don't have trash service, but I don't leave my trash.
And there's no problem.
We remove it every week, which matches.
They take it to work with me and our, you know.
Because the ordinance doesn't stipulate that you have to buy it from said company. It just, it stipulates that you have to have a weekly removal. So it doesn't have a purchase requirement to it.
Right.
So.
So every other city I've worked in, there's been a requirement that every single family home or duplex has to have, has to help pay for that service. That makes it competitive. It makes it, it brings the price down to where they can afford it right now.
There's no problem that we're being asked to solve or no gap that we need to fill that isn't being filled. And so there's no compelling reason to.
We don't have a trash problem here. We have, we have a recycling center down here that I use all the time, you know.
That we're paying a portion of?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Are we paying $10,000 a year?
Yeah.
I would say the only reason to ever consider anything of this nature would be that we as the city government are in a unique position to fill some gap, solve some problem that commercially can't be filled or solved. I don't see that as a case now.
We talked about lowering the price, but yet for people that own businesses and take their trash from their house to their business, for the service that they're already paying for at their business, we're not lowering the price for them because now they have to get it at home. We're going to require them to have it at home.
You don't have to require, you don't have to have home requirement. You don't have to have every resident. You don't have to have every resident. If they don't want to get home service, they didn't have to get it. The way we set it, I apologize. You don't have, it's not mandatory for homeowner to have it.
Well, I mean.
If, if we were going to pursue this conversation further, could we determine the monetary factor that would make it feasible or not feasible? Like 60% of St. Genevieve residents would have to take part in this in order for us to continue the next contract year.
Well, the other 40%, the other trucks are going to come down. So where you're reaching the purpose, they might say.
Well.
Thanks. I, I would like everybody to just consider before we look at moving forward with this, really taking the complaints that we've heard from residents and seeing if there's another way we can address those complaints. Rather than trying to do this very large thing that a lot of people seem very against. And I do appreciate the survey, much like with the Glenda's street vacate. I appreciate all the work that the city staff has done. But I kind of think if we look at it a little differently and see what the problems are and our other ways to remedy those problems, that maybe that might be a little more productive.
Essentially, I'm doing the trash.
One complaint I also got was.
Possibility.
We're getting, we're taking away the choice of the free market from the consumer. What's next? Are we going to go after UPS and FedEx that only one can deliver your packages? Well, I mean, only one, one can deliver your packages? I mean, you're taking a choice away from the consumer.
So that's why I'm recommending we look at what the problems are and, and seeing how we as a city can address those problems before we take that choice away from those.
I think the whole issue that I brought up is, is what I've always heard in talk is what the trucks are doing to the streets. Gary's talked about that, what they're doing. Go over there on Scott Street and the streets over there in Ashley subdivision. And a lot of it's got to do with the poor base on the streets, but along the curvage, holes from trucks.
We got one company now that's using small trucks. The city of Clayton, when I was up there, I don't know what they're doing now, but they mandated the smaller trucks coming in. So that's another thing we can look at too, is mandate smaller trucks.
You know, we deal with weight every day, you know, what we're doing and stuff. And I don't know if anybody's noticed, but the two primary trash haulers in here use two different types of trucks. You know, one has a third axle, the other one doesn't. All the trucks that I've seen here. Now, some of them in the lead belt they do. But, you know, why can't we limit, you know, and I think like Mr. Steiger said, those trucks are capable of having scales on them. You know, surely we can limit, or we can limit the amount of weight that they're putting on our streets, you know, in the amount of loads that they haul. But, you know, you talk about free enterprise and stuff. We just recently rebid our trash service and we do it on a three-year contract. Each of those contract years has an increase. We just rebid it with a couple of different sources and it rolled back to the initial year of three years ago, our price. You know, so the bidding process does accomplish lower prices. You know, and, and that's the thing I just wish we could come up with. If we're going to do this, this is what the person's going to pay. And two, it's not mandatory that everybody has. And I, I can't imagine we can't, we can't pass that as a city saying, you don't have to have trash service. If you take it to work, that's fine if you, as long as you don't take it out back and.
I don't, I don't disagree with the spirit of what you're saying. But if we, it's, if it's not either or, then we've just added one more provider. We've added the city as a provider through whatever subcontractor we, we use. And then maybe Sue makes a point, counter to, to my earlier comments. Maybe we are in a position to fix a problem that I'm just not aware of. So if it's a wear and tear on streets or whatever, that, that is our.
Well, I think that is our primary goal.
I think that's the primary goal on this, is the wear and tear of the streets.
But there could be other ways to do that too.
By limiting the trucks and tell them they can only haul X number of pounds.
Yeah, but then who, who are those two parties to negotiate then? Because we're.
No, we pass it and say, if you're going to do, have service in city of St. Genevieve, you can't be hauling over X number of pounds or your truck can't weigh over X number of pounds.
It sounds like a very complex.
Third choice out there now is using small trucks. From what I hear, they're doing a real good job, so.
Trash trucks aren't the only contributor to the wear and tear on our roads. Our snowplows are tearing up the streets even more. So, I mean, even reducing the, the traffic of the, the garbage trucks doesn't necessarily save the streets. It's out of my ward, but I can speak for Screw Street in that there's a reoccurring pothole that has nothing to do with the garbage truck, but everything to do with the plow truck, the snowplow every winter. So, you know, we, we have to be sure that that's where our issues are coming from if we think that's what we're trying to solve.
Check out the alternatives.
Yeah.
Can we limit?
We put this on hold for the first three years. We put this on hold for the first three years.
Well, I mean, you can't, you can't put it out for bid, though, without.
I don't, you're just asking people to give you an estimate, because you're not, will they do that, because then when you get those numbers, and that's out in the open, now they know what the other person is bidding, that's, that's not fair competition. Yeah, why bid on something you don't know what's gonna happen, you know, you have your concrete, so.
Voluntary given number.
We did have some presentations from trash carriers, they came in and gave us some of their, of course, but we had multiple, I think we had two different carriers come in, and give us a presentation on the pros and cons of, of doing that, so that might be another place to.
Good idea.
Good idea.
Okay. I would like for the housing committee that was just elected here minutes ago, I'll stick around for a little bit. Okay, Jerry, ready? Maybe I can save my life.
That'll be my first word, but it's getting fired.
I saved, so, I saw your touch.
So, you go voluntary again.
I'm telling you, I should know about it.
Are we adjourned?
We're adjourned. You're adjourned. Okay, good. No, I'm, I'm, I wanna stay. I wanna hear what you gotta say. See you, bud.